City Clerk, will we be ready to go at 7?
Yes, we will.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see, are we ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. Let's call the San Bruno City Council meeting of December the 14th, 2021, to order. And if I could please ask our City Clerk to take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar is not yet in the room. Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Here, thank you. Hit the wrong button. All right. At this time, we're going to go into the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have asked, we have a distinguished gentleman who will be leading us in the pledge and also giving us a presentation. Mr. Steve Okamoto, who is a former mayor and council member of the good city of Foster City, and a gentleman that will be talking to us a little bit later. And so, sir, I will turn it over to you for the pledge, and thank you for doing it.
I'm honored to do it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the honor. Please face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and also want to congratulate, Steve, I'm sorry, well, Steve, known in prior bid, but he also adopted this district city program with Japan, and this is now the chair, and he has been working on it for many years. So congratulations to that, and I know there is more work ahead, but congratulations. I know it was a lot of time and effort, and I'm sure Foster City is very proud. And then, we will be coming back. At this point, I'm going to move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. What I am going to do is ask for public comments first that are not on the agenda, then I'm going to ask for comments that are anything for consent. I do know that we have a person or two on consent, and be respectful, we're going to go ahead and do that. So at first, I'll ask for public comments for items not on the agenda this evening. And I know Mr. Hanley will be speaking under consent, and I'm not sure about owner. So at this time, maybe we can check if City Clerk on the person named Owner, and if that is for our consent.
I'm not sure either, so I will bring them in. We only have you listed as Owner, O-W-N-E-R, so I'm going to bring you in the room.
Mr. Mayor, before the public begins, if there's going to be comments on random consent items, I'm recused from item N.
Well, this is just comments from public. We want to have no discussion or dialogue at this point, and then we can do the recusal.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes?
Yes, hi. Hi, this is Jim Evangelist.
Oh.
Yeah, new computer, haven't set it up properly, but at least I'm on here. I would like to talk tonight, I see that you're voting on the new members for the foundation board, and I'm not talking about, I don't want to talk about the vote tonight, I want to talk about the selection process that was engaged in a few weeks ago that came up with these candidates. I am just shocked that somehow, I don't know who engineered this, but it seems like this was a soft coup occurred here, because I think everybody in the city of San Bruno assumes that our elected officials are going to interview and analyze the people who are going to be on this very important board for the San Bruno Community Foundation, and this was taken out of their hands. It was done quickly, which I also find really not a very good practice for the council to allow to happen. There should be more time allotted for people to analyze what's taking place. I understand you had a meeting one night and a vote the next night on whether or not this was to go through, on the new changes on how to appoint these new individuals. It was even voted on, it was just a brief, it wasn't even codified yet. I'm encouraging the council to correct this situation and to put it into the bylaws for this very important foundation board, that all the members ought to be analyzed, interviewed by, and appointed by the city council only. I don't want to see unelected officials having an influence on this important board. Without, if you take it out of the hands of the council completely, then us as voters have absolutely no recourse on how to address if this board is not doing what the rest of the residents of San Bruno want it to do or expect it to do. So I really am encouraging you to rectify this situation, put it in permanent words that they are to be selected, interviewed, and appointed by the city council only. So that's really all I have to say. Hopefully that you guys will take action quickly and not be surprised, because the fact that was done in a very rushed manner also is very uncomfortable for me. I'd like to see you just take back democracy and allow us to have influence as voters. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I'm seeing no other, at this time, members of the public under public comment. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment, and we're going to move on to consent. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on any of the items that are under consent, and I know we do have two speakers for that, and I will ask the City Clerk to please bring them in.
Yes, the first is Peter, Peter Hanley. Just one moment while I bring you in. Mr. Hanley, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and city council members. I'm Peter Hanley, and I'm here on behalf of the Semitao Union High School District as its board president, and our attorney will also speak on behalf of the district. Also here this evening is our superintendent, Kevin Skelly. Dr. Skelly and our attorney are available to answer any questions you may have. On tonight's consent calendar, you have an item which is a resolution specifically about the Crestmore site, which is owned in its entirety by the high school district. We're therefore very interested in this matter, and I'm here tonight on behalf of all of the thousands of high school district students, families, and staff. The high school district used the redevelopment of the Crestmore site as a tremendous opportunity for the city of San Bruno and its residents. A carefully planned development has enormous potential. First, it will provide the city with much-needed housing. Second, it'll provide the district with the funding for equally-needed housing for its teachers and staff. Third, it'll bring in tax revenue to all of the public agencies serving this area, including the high school district, San Bruno Park Elementary School District, and the city itself. And fourth, it'll provide a long-term solution to some of the city's playing field it needs in ways far superior to the substandard and outdated fields now located at Crestmore. An interpretation of the city's general plan that takes away about half of the Crestmore site capable of development will all but ensure that the tremendous potential that I've just described cannot and will not be met. The district has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with an expert developer who has extensive experience building in San Bruno and who we believe can bring all of these objectives to reality. The city and the community will have ample time and opportunity to work with the developer to make this project a successful one for everyone involved, especially the residents of San Bruno. There is no need for the precipitous action the city council is being asked to take at this time. So the district asks that you not approve the proposed resolution before you tonight, so that the parties can all keep working together towards the best interests of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and for being here at the meeting, President Hanley. Next, go please.
Next is Harold Freeman.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Freeman, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Harold Freeman, and I'm with the law firm of Lozano Smith, and we serve as legal counsel to San Mateo Union High School District.
Mr. Mayor, your turn. I apologize, Mr. Freeman. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Are these comments, at this point, should be wait until the consent items are discussed?
As we received an email, this, we're going to do it, we were notified ahead of time, it's been checked with council, and so we're going to let this last speaker speak, and then we'll go back to our presentations.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Glad for the interruption, just wanted to clarify.
Not a problem whatsoever, Vice Mayor. And Mr. Freeman, please feel free to begin, start from the beginning if you wish.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Again, Harold Freeman with Lozano Smith for San Mateo Union High School District. The district sent a letter today through its legal counsel, my partner Jim Sanchez, to the city talking about the item you have on the consent calendar tonight for 6N regarding the Crestmore property. I wanted to just emphasize a few of the points made there, because the district has serious legal concerns with this resolution and with the means in which the city is proceeding on this matter. Initially, I do want to note that we do not believe that this matter is appropriate for consent calendar. This is a resolution that uniquely impacts one property that happens to, in this case, be owned by another public agency, and it is appropriate, I think, for further discussion, and we would encourage you to. And we would encourage you to, for the city council members, for somebody to pull this for separate discussion, you'd be happy to address it more then. To follow up with the board president's comments, we certainly encourage the city not to rush into this action. To the extent we're debating about the meaning of your general plan, that general plan is not going anywhere. And to the extent that we are talking about dictionary definitions in the resolution, they too are not going anywhere. And there should appropriately be time to take into consideration some of the district's concerns and have more opportunity for further discussion. The main point that I wanted to make tonight is that the resolution literally requires, quote, dedication, end quote, of 12 acres to the city of San Bruno from the school district. The general plan itself is silent on these 12 acres in OSR eight. It doesn't talk about 12 acres, it talks about fields generally. It also does not require a dedication. It talks about a reservation. So we've changed the terminology significantly in a way which could constitute an unconstitutional taking of the district's property without appropriate notice to the district, without appropriate opportunity for due process in this matter, and it seems without compensation to the district as well. We've also raised concerns around the Housing Accountability Act as to the objective standards that have to be laid out in the general plan and submit that the general plan language in OSR eight that we're discussing does not objectively identify that the district must dedicate 12 acres of its property to the city. If it did state that, we again would have the constitutional takings issue that we talked about. And we've also emphasized that there are inconsistencies within your general plan where you both indicate that these fields should somehow be preserved, but also that they should be developed as single-family homes. Indeed, that appears to be one of the ways that the city meets its RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation Numbers, to assume that there will be development on this property. So we would encourage you to put the brakes on for the time being, have the opportunity for further dialogue around this resolution before you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other hands up, we will proceed back to announcements and presentations. And our first one this evening, which I'm very happy to bring up, is to receive a presentation from Tanforan Assembly Center Memorial Committee. We have with us the vice president, Steve Ukomoto, which, when I saw him in Foster City at an event, honoring the Semitao folks that have unfortunately lost their life due to COVID, we spoke about this. And Steve, you've been working on this a long time, a lot of dedication, and very much appreciated. So please turn it over to you for your update and presentation.
If you don't mind, I'd like to share a screen. Hopefully. I may need some help, it doesn't seem to want to share. Oh, there we go. All right, where are we? Here we go. There we go. Let me put my timer on so I have the right number. Thank you very much, Rico. I do appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation to the city council here in San Bruno. I'm going to be as brief as I can because I understand you do have a lot of things to discuss. But what I do want to do is just take a minute or two to do a little bit of background because when I made the presentation to the council, I think it's been about five years ago, some of the council members may not have been on the council to hear my presentation. And at the same time, I think many of the residents of San Bruno will be very interested to hear about this incident that happened almost 80 years ago to the day. We all know that in 1941, December 7th specifically, Japan bombed the naval base in Hawaii called Pearl Harbor. And on the very next day, December 8th, after President Roosevelt made his State of Infamy speech, the US declared war on Japan. And right after that, the government, radio stations, newspapers, many Americans really believed that the Japanese who are living on the West Coast, that they would despise or subvert us. And as a result of the pressure that the president was receiving, he, on February 19th, 1942, issued an executive order. That executive order was 9066. And it basically gave the army the authority to remove all Japanese from the West Coast. That's 120,000 persons of Japanese ancestry. So what happened? Well, after the executive order, people only had weeks to sell their homes, get rid of their businesses, liquidate their farms. And we were directed to meet at a certain place. Just to be on the record, I was five weeks old at the time. So we were picked up in buses, especially here in the Bay Area. And we were brought to Tanforan Racetrack. Many people don't remember or know that back in the early 30s and 40s, Tanforan was a racetrack. It was burned down in 64. And out of the ashes grew the shops at Tanforan. So what they did is they built barracks in the infield of the racetrack. But there weren't enough racetrack, there weren't enough barracks for everybody. So what else do they have at a racetrack? Horse dolls. So we had to actually live in a horse doll. Not for very long because they built some more barracks. But my mom, after I got older enough to understand, she said that she didn't remember too much about Tanforan, but the thing that she would never forget for the rest of her life was the smell of the manure. Because that's all they could do is just whitewash the boards. So in April, we moved in. And in October, they closed Tanforan. And everybody who was left, they were trained out to Utah, to the internment camp called Topaz. There were 10 of these internment camps throughout the country, all in the worst places that you can imagine, people living in deserts, in the mountains, in the swamps of Arkansas. So that's where they spent the rest of the war until August of 1945. So what we want to do is we want to build a memorial. There were 8,000 people of Japanese ancestry who were imprisoned at Tanforan. These 8,000 people were from all over the Bay Area, mostly from San Francisco and here around the San Mateo area. These people are dying off because this was 80 years ago. I am one of the youngest, I mean, five weeks old. But there are people like my parents, my grandparents, who died before we could do anything like this. So what we wanted to do is build here in San Bruno at the former racetrack of Tanforan, a memorial plaza. And we want to make this an addition to San Bruno as a cultural and historical icon. The other thing that we want to do is build this memorial because we want to make this a reminder to people that we cannot let this happen again. This, for those of you who have never seen Racetrack at Tanforan, this is how it looked in 1942 in the street, right in front, that's El Camino. So where are we building this? Well, through the graces of BART. They have actually given us, oops, give me one more picture. This is what the Tanforan racetrack looked like. Those barracks in the infield, that's where most of us have to live. For those of you who are familiar with the shops at Tanforan and the San Bruno BART station, that little alcove right outside the San Bruno BART station, that's where we are going to be building the memorial. We've been working on it since 2012. And as of last week, I'm happy to report that we have finally signed the construction contracts. This was after BART had to go through all their permit process. But we are actually going to be starting construction next year, excuse me, yeah, I guess next year, January. And we hope by the end of April that the memorial will be completed. We want to do it during the week of April 28th. And that's significant to us because that is the 80th anniversary of when Tanforan was opened. So all of you on the council, of course, will be getting invitations to that. We already have arranged with Councilman Jackie Spear, who will be making the keynote address. So this is what it's going to look like. It's beautiful. We've had an architectural, a master firm from Mill Valley designed this for us. And they did it all pro bono, so it saved us close to $80,000. But if you look at the front, there's a statue of two little girls. This is very, from a very iconic photo of Dorothea Lange, of this family that's waiting for buses to be bused here to Tanforan. The statues have already been cast. They are actually in a storage unit at the shops. So we're ready to move it down when it's ready to be installed. The tree in front is a cherry, Japanese cherry blossom. We were planning on having 10 of them for each of the internment camps. But as you can see, just, we just didn't have enough space. That structure in the back, which looks like a cage, is actually a depiction of the horse doll. Now, we had to really open it wide, wide open. It actually didn't look like that as a horse doll. But through discussions with BART security, they wanted it to be as open as possible because they didn't want anybody sleeping in there in case. Those blacks signs to the right of the horse doll, that's where we will have the names of the 8,000 persons who were imprisoned at Tanforan. So that's what it looks like. We're ready to go. We have signed the contracts. So what does the committee need from you in San Bruno? Well, we are still doing fundraising. We still need about $100,000, $150,000 to complete the budget. So we're looking for companies in San Bruno, like YouTube, for example, that would, you know, like to support this memorial. We also would like to have your city maintenance help us with the maintenance of the memorial. We already do have the San Bruno Boy Scouts and the San Bruno Lions Club helping us. And as you see the asterisk, there is a letter from former mayor Jim Ruane that was dated in 2015. And in that letter, he did hope to work with the committee in making sure that the memorial was maintained properly. And we're asking for donations from the city, from any of the residents that are watching this broadcast. So with that, I want to make this brief, I think it was barely five minutes. So if the council members have any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
First, very, appreciate very much the presentation, the update, and seeing the final design. And I also thank you, sir, because you sat on the city council as well. So I appreciate the length of your presentation. Thank you, sir. Any questions from my colleagues at this time? I am going to say that we appreciate the invitations. And like you said, next year is here. And so it will begin, and in April, a dedication. And so I can't personally thank you enough because you were here when the speech was given some years ago at that location of what was going to be worked on and come to fruition. And you have seen it full circle. And so I look forward to seeing you in April and at that location again as the project concludes. So once again, Steve, thank you for your time. Thank you for your dedication to this project from the personal basis as well as, you know, how you just, I mean, you have the history. And so it is so personal, and that is so meaningful. And then if I could finally ask you, could you just clarify for those that may be listening or watch us later about how people can donate or where they donate?
Well, we have a website, very easy, tanforanmemorial.org. And on that website, there'll be plenty of action as to how and where to make a donation. So thank you, tanforanmemorial.org. Thank you, Rico, for the opportunity. It was nice seeing you. And thanks, council members, for your attention.
It was nice seeing you virtual, and it was great seeing you in person the other month in your city. Thank you for leading us in the pledge and enjoy the rest of your evening.
You too. Good night.
Good night. We will go ahead and continue on announcements and presentations. And item B, receive presentation from Hip Housing and receive the 2022 Hip Housing Calendar. I'll ask the city clerk to bring in, looks like, Barbara. There we are. Bubble, you on mute?
Yes. And I think I'm going to try to share a screen, but I'm not a professional at this. Can you see the screen that I'm trying to share?
Yes, we can.
It doesn't look in the best, it's not the full screen, but I'm kind of going to go with it.
No problem.
Okay. Well, good evening. I'm happy to join you this evening on behalf of Hip Housing. We have accomplished a 2022 calendar in spite of the times of COVID. And we were just able last week to celebrate with the children, who were the winners and their families, and a few elected officials, a few donors to the calendar in person. And that's always the best way to celebrate this. And next year, we'll be celebrating our 50th anniversary and hope to send a wider invitation to everyone. At Hip Housing, we have been working hard alongside of many other organizations, but specifically in the realm of using existing housing for home sharing, rehabbing existing housing for maintaining affordable housing in our communities, and then helping folk through our self-sufficiency program to become skilled enough in our area to earn a living that allows them to afford housing in our area. And so it's a creative way that Hip Housing has found a place to fit within the housing realm of our community. And thank you to San Bruno for the financial support you've given us and other support and help with the outreach that we do. We very much appreciate that. We have over 30 people currently home sharing. And in San Mateo County, we have over 700 people in housing units that we've rehabilitated. And then we have like 61 adults and 68 children in our self-sufficiency program. But we also do a large amount of information and referral. So residents of San Bruno call us. Sometimes they're wanting to know about our program specifically. Sometimes they're trying to figure out their housing conundrums. And that can be a wide range of issues. We're able to try to guide people in ways to get answers to some of their problems. And as you can see from these pictures, housing is key. Housing is the stability, the safety, the well-being of children. And in July, she says, "Home means a safe place, warmth, and a love place to meet with my family." And Jimena in September says, "Mi casa segura es mi casa, en mi casa tengo mucho amor." Just for children, housing is important, but it's also super important to adults to have a well-rounded life, to have the ability to be full-fledged citizens in our community. And so again, I want to thank San Bruno very much for all your support over the years. And we would say we couldn't do it without you. So thank you so much. And I believe you're all going to be getting And I believe you're all gonna be getting copies of the calendars, and calendars will be made available, you know, sometimes through the library and other mechanisms if people are interested. So, I don't know if you have any questions specifically this evening, but I'm most willing to answer any.
Thank you for your comments and update. And we look forward to this every year, so I very much appreciate it. Is there any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? Seeing none at this time. Barbara, thank you so much for being here. And we appreciate it very kindly. And wish you also a good evening. And thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
For what you do.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Still going back. I see we have two hands up, and I'm not certain if there are two. Hip Housing, or to the last presentation. What I will do before I start to continue on, why don't I go ahead and bring in those two individuals in case they wanted to speak and then depart? Or please welcome to stay with us, and then we will continue on. City Clerk?
Yes, the first is Landis Grayden. Just one moment, I'm trying to get Landis unmuted. I'm unable to get Landis unmuted, and I see the hand went down. So, that might have been an error.
Okay. Why don't we go to the next speaker, then?
The next speaker is Paul Lipinski.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Could you tell me what H I P stands for? It wasn't defined in our presentation. Thank you.
We have Barbara still here?
I think so. I can also try to real quick Google that. I'm trying to bring her back in, just one moment. Hi, Barbara, did you hear the question?
I did. Human Investment Project? So, Human Investment Project for Housing.
Thank you. I was already bidding you a good night, so thank you for hanging around just in case. I appreciate it. Okay. Thank you kindly. Okay. And now, with that, we will continue on to the announcements and presentations. We're now gonna move on to item C. Learn about San Bruno's district election process. speeding recordings and materials are posted to districtingSanBruno.org. Schedule. Residents are encouraged to visit districtingSanBruno.org to find the public mapping tools and participate in the districting process by drawing and submitting a proposed district map. Next item is D. Survey deadline has been extended. The community perception survey for the Safe and Equitable Leasing Review Project is now extended through December 31st, 2021. This survey is still available in English and Spanish. It takes about ten minutes, and you can go online. And also, you can take it, there is a survey kiosk, which is also available at the Shops of Tan Fran located in the food court. And if you're walking around or what have you, you can go ahead and go into the food court and take care of it at that time. And then, we're gonna move on to item E. And we're going to receive the annual report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. And we are going to, I'm going to turn it over to the Chair, Mr. Stephen Seymour. You're on mute, sir.
Yes, just unmuted. Thank you. All right. Thank you to the council members and to our mayor. There is a presentation that I'd like to have on the screen at this point, and I can walk you through the presentation. Thank you. Okay. So, tonight, I will be delivering the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee Annual Report. And I'm gonna be delivering it, you can move to the next slide. I'm gonna be delivering on behalf of the committee, which is represented by myself, the Chair, John Lampros, the Vice Chair, Rhonda Collins, Roberta Hannibal. And I also need to mention that Marco De Razo was with us during a portion of this as the Chair, and Scott Thomas, who has just resigned from the committee. But both of these members did a lot of work this year. And then, we're supported by great staff members. Hiwan, Sayed Fakhri, who's the consultant traffic engineer. Colin Page, our police sergeant, and he replaced Jean Wong. Next slide, please. So, the responsibilities of the T S P C are to review and recommend actions to the city council. And these actions are reviewed and recommended for traffic calming needs, parking needs, local traffic issues, and pedestrian safety. We're also responsible for reviewing policies and programs affecting traffic and parking for final city council actions. And those include parking restriction applications, traffic calming toolkit, and crosswalk installation guidelines. Our public meetings and community engagement have both, have mailers, citywide website, city staff contact. And then, we meet the first Wednesday of each month. And then, for the last year, it's been the Zoom, just like the council meetings are. The accomplishments for 2020. Parking restrictions. Now, these have been done. Everything that I'm gonna deliver to you right now on this page has been recommended and has been finished. Recommended reducing the existing red curb zone on the south side of Rosewood Drive near Glenbrook. Recommended removing the accessible parking zone in front of 880 San Mateo Avenue. Recommended establishing the red curb on north side of Cressmore Drive adjacent to the Crystal Springs Terrace Apartments. And we recommended loading zones on San Mateo Avenue in front of 500 and 501 San Mateo Avenue. The last recommendation on this page is the loading zone on Angus Avenue at the intersection of San Mateo Avenue and Angus Avenue. And those last two are both in the downtown areas, you know. These we have recommended, and they're in various stages of being done now. Parking restrictions. We recommended red curbs adjacent to the driveways of various city water facilities. Those are located at 760 Glenview Drive, Tank Number Three, Station Number Three at 2434 Whitman Way, Station Five at 598 Maple Avenue, and then, the Rollingwood Station at 2250 Rollingwood Drive. All in progress. Continuing with accomplishments for 2020, the traffic calming toolkit. We reviewed the traffic calming toolkit clarifications of criteria and process supplement. We made some revisions this past year, and the committee accepted those revisions. Parking permit. We recommended parking permit on Huntington Avenue in front of the Sid Corp yard. And along with that recommendation was to remove the median island on Huntington to increase the number of permit parking. And we recommended installing yield signs and yield lines, shark tooth at the intersection of Clark Avenue and Acacia Avenue. And you can see that to the side, the intersection there. Yield signs and yield lines at the intersection of Clark Avenue and Hazel Avenue, all these to improve the safety of the city. We also recommended at the intersection, striping and signage improvements. Recommended removing outdated signs, installing new signs and pavement striping and crosswalk striping at the intersection of Crystal Springs Road and Cunningham Way to make that area safer, too, for our community. Goals for 2021 and 22. Implement the traffic calming on residential streets based on the revised traffic calming process. Number two, participate in the stakeholder meetings that will be upcoming for the L R S P, which is the Local Roadway Safety Plan that the city will be working on, and Safe Routes to Schools, the S R T S plan. Review the traffic calming thresholds for speed and volume for neighboring cities. There was some discussion around the traffic calming toolkit that maybe the thresholds that we're using might need to be updated. So, we've asked staff, and staff has graciously helped, showing us what neighboring cities are doing. So, we'll be looking to see whether or not we need to make some updates on the traffic calming thresholds. And then, review the additional loading zones in downtown because there may be a need for more loading zones. How you contact us or to contact, to report traffic engineering issues, contact the Department of Public Works at 650-616-7065. Or you can also send an email to PWengineering@SanBruno.ca.gov. And then, to contact the police department to report traffic enforcement or parking issues, contact the police department at 650-616-7100. Or by completing the online traffic complaint form at the following link. And I'll just kind of hold it for anyone that wants to write that link down before we move to the next page. I'm not gonna repeat the link. How to submit a traffic-related request to the city. You can submit a request in writing, and you can do that to PWengineering@SanBruno.ca.gov. Or you can hand-deliver or mail it to Public Works at the City of San Bruno, 567 El Camino Real, 94066. In this, please state in your request the nature of the issue or the problem, any solution or request that you feel will alleviate the problem. Obviously, put your name, and how would you like to be contacted? I believe that is the end of the presentation here, so are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Chair. Any questions or comments from colleagues? And we'll first go to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour, for the presentation. And just wanted to thank everyone for the work that they do on the T S P C. Also, the departed Marco De Razo, former Chair, and Scott Thomas, who recently left. So, mainly just thank you. My one question would be, what would you feel is needed from the council to support what the T S P C is doing?
You know, I've been pleased the last several months, three to four months. I feel that there has been a support from the council in the background. I'm very pleased working with the staff. We recently devised a way so that committee members could agendize topics. I believe that's working well. But I think I'd just like to continue to have you in the background, the council members in the background, kind of overseeing and watching what we're doing. I believe that this next year, we're gonna get a lot, we're gonna get a lot done. I like the traffic calming toolkit, and we've already done some good work with it. I'd like to echo my thanks to Marco and to Scott. And I'd like to thank you, Marty, for acknowledging the work that you did and for the work staff does.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So, the Vice Mayor stole most of what I was gonna say because I was gonna do the same in terms of thanking the entire T S P C, all of its members, and you, the Chair, for the great work that you do. I'm just really happy to see that the traffic calming toolkit is being looked at. Many, many years ago, I was on T S P C when we implemented it originally, and it was always designed to be a living document that would grow and change as the needs of our city changed. So, I'm very glad to see that that is happening, and I appreciate the great work that you're doing. And I also echo my thanks to the departed member in Marco and the newly departed member in Scott. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody who's working on the traffic calming measures. When I got on the council, I was told the process was that you have to show up for public comment. And then, somebody takes that public comment, and it goes into somewhere. And so, I know I've received calls from residents just thinking the move towards actually having a process where they can be heard. I was at the meeting where the first set came to the T S P C. I think the T S P C did an excellent job of, you know, just managing expectations of everybody there, including myself, in the meeting. And I just wanted to thank everybody who's on the T S P C because the job, I think, is oftentimes underwhelming, but incredibly, incredibly important to the city and the families and individuals that we have here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mason. I'd just like to, you know, as, prior to being on the council, I was one of those that would stand at public comments. And I'm very happy, too, that now there's a process for the public to actually engage beyond just speaking for two or three minutes and not having us feedback. So, thank you for your support.
Councilmember Salazar.
I also wanted to pass along my thanks to you, Stephen, and the rest of the committee. I know that your committee is one of the ones that often gets a lot of public input and often unhappy public input. So, definitely appreciate you being the face of the city and representing us well. So, thank you. And pass along my thanks to the rest of the team.
Thank you, Councilmember Salazar, certainly.
And with all that said, let's make a five oh. Not that there was a vote. But no, Mr. Chair, Stephen, if you would, please pass on to all the members for their time, their dedication. And as Councilmember Salazar said, I have been to some of those meetings where it's a room full of folks, and there's a lot of passion. There's a lot of concern and over worry or safety. And so, being able to listen and help give direction and some guidance is much appreciated. So, thank you for your presentation. And please pass on, on behalf of the council, all of our thanks for the work.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. And I would be remiss in not saying that we, it's a good group of people, and the team consists of those who are committee members and staff. We work very well together. So, I wanna make sure that I pay my thanks to Hiwan and to Fakhri and the police and all those others that help us in our endeavors. And thank you for your support, all of you.
And thank you for, just circling back around to that to appreciate staff's time, effort, and as well as their passion toward trying to help the process and improve things in San Bruno. And you have a good rest of your evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we will move on to item F. Receive update on the Recreation Aquatic Center construction project. And we will turn this over to Rod Rico, who is the project manager.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Turn my video on. I don't know why it's not turning on. Anyway, can you guys see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor, and the city council member. Thanks again for this opportunity to service the city and especially this very important project. So, again, my name is Rod MacGreg. With me, I think, is Tim Shaw, our construction manager. I will be providing an update on this project. Our agenda will include project information update completed to date, schedule update, and what's happening in the next many days. Project information, we started in the September of 2021. We're still tracking to complete by 2023 or fall of 2023. Estimated cost completed to date is about five percent to end of November. If you click on this EarthCom link, you will see what the project looks like. That photo on the bottom. The next page is what we completed to the end of October. We completed all the three removal, old building demolition, gym building, except a portion of the building pad. We recycled the property. We recycled approximately 2,750 tons of concrete requiring debris. We completed our soil testing for our geopier related to ground improvement for evaluation, as well as the soil test for the soil nail after retaining wall for evaluation. This next slide is what we completed to the end of November. Through November, we completed all the demo for both in the building, all the clearing and grabbing. We also completed the evaluation for the soil related to geopier, the ground improvement, and the soil nail, the retaining wall for building supplemental. Geopier is the two images in the bottom. On the bottom left, you can see the layout of the building. Those tiny dots represent the geopier. Geopier is on the bottom right. This is what you're going to see. There will be 20 in diameter. It's going to be drilled down below grade, 20 to 40 feet deep. It's going to be filled up with fresh rock to provide additional stabilization to our existing ground before we put in our building foundation. The soil nail wall or the retaining wall is the wall that goes between the building and Crystal Spring. The next slide is our schedule update derived from the contractor's schedule. Basically listed by location, and we have the activities on the right. As you can see, we are still on Phase 1A. We completed our demo. We're trying to get going with our shoring or retaining wall and continue with grading. We hope to get that going all the way down to the middle first quarter of next year so we can get started on our pool and the building. And we're hoping to advance some of the activities on the city parkway, which is the creek realignment, the street realignment, utility work that includes the water and sewer installation, as well as the water installation on Crystal Spring. While working on the city parkway, we intend to work on the new parking lot for the building. Next slide is what we're going to see the next 90 days. We're going to be seeing the installation of the temporary water bypass line so we could remove the old line. We start removing this block wall so we'll be replacing it with the new retaining wall or the soil nail wall. We could start grading, hopefully to get going with the geopier before we finish the shoring. Once we get the geopier done, we hope to see, the next 90 days, to see some of the building foundation and pool construction started. We're going to be providing more updates in the next advisory committee meeting and San Bruno Community Foundation, so that the City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update. Any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Hamilton.
First, I want to say thank you for the update. I especially like the schedule updates slide. That's a really effective way to show everyone what's happening and where we are in the process, so I very much appreciate that. The question I have has to do with the street alignment. Is it anticipated that City Parkway will need to be closed for any length of time? I'm not looking for dates because it's too far off, but if so, you know, do we have any estimations for, you know, if we're to be able to keep City Parkway open during the alignment and shift things around? Can you give us a little bit of detail on that, please?
Yes. During the construction of the city parkway, we're first going to realign the creek, and the street will start to get realigned. And we have to install all those deep utilities, sewer including, that goes down 15 feet in water next, and that goes crisscrossing the street. And by doing that, we will be closing the street for several months.
So it will be, will City Parkway be impassable for several months?
Correct.
Okay. So I assume we're going to have detours in place and all of that, because it's heavily traveled during school times?
That's correct. There will be plenty of notifications to be provided, the detour will be provided, and we will try to work on the school time as well to make sure when we close it, we'll try to minimize impact as far as school and all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Those were some very good questions, Councilmember Hamilton. So we're even. My question for you tonight is, common question is, I haven't received any new complaints in quite a while from the construction project. There was one that was pretty loud, but it seems like that's been resolved. What is your, what can you tell us about the complaints, the frequency, and how is it going with the residents?
For the last, for months been working on this project, we probably received three calls. We have calls about dust, we have calls about lighting, and we have calls about pedestrian access. I think all those questions have been addressed. I think we have plans for the pedestrian access. We are trying to resolve the lighting as well. I see we could do something about that, and the noise has been addressed. I think it's been pretty quiet as far as public complaints. Based on my experience in the past, this is a big project that I don't hear that much complaint.
Thank you.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I was just going to report out from the committee that there was substantial discussion at the committee meeting around the additional two lanes and that there was not a consensus to continue that conversation. So I just thought it should be mentioned. And also, I did have a question regarding, did you foresee any construction delays just due to the holidays? Any time that's going to be taken off? Just curious.
Yeah, I think at this stage, as you can see, it looks pretty quiet, but there's a lot of work going on behind the scene, trying to get all the details completed. So once we get going, there'll be no delay, and that's all this effort's going on. The rain is giving us that time as well, but we're trying to mobilize, getting all the strike materials and pieces to come to the job site. It's going to be a lot of work as they show up, as they show up, so.
Okay, I was going to ask about the rain, but you already addressed that. Thank you. Again, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here this evening. And again, continue the good job, and we look forward to hearing back from you at another time. But thank you and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
All right. With that, that takes care of announcements and presentations. Now we're going to go on to consent calendar. What I would first ask is, is there any item that a council member wants to pull for a separate vote? Vice Mayor Medina, separate votes now.
Yes, I would request a separate vote for Item M.
M. Okay. Okay, I see no others for a separate vote. Now, may I ask if there are any items from the members, and then I'll get to Mr. Hamilton, for additional comment or question? Vice Mayor.
Comment on Item H, as in Henry.
Thank you. No, appreciate you doing that. Councilmember Hamilton.
I have a brief comment on Item L, and I will need to recuse that there is discussion on Item N.
Item N?
Item M, as in N. And obviously, when we vote, I will not be voting on Item N.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Seeing and hearing of no others, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to, first, if I could, take those that we have, question or comment. And so we're going to start with H, as in Harry, and that is adopt the resolution appropriating $2,600 from the Restricted Revenues Fund, City Art Fund fees for sponsorship of a community service department Chinese New Year event. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just really wanted to commend staff for expanding this event, Chinese New Year, Year of the Tiger. I think it's deserving, and I really do appreciate the effort that our staff is putting into celebrating our diversity. So kudos.
Thank you. Let's move on to Item L, confirm appointment. Am I right? Yes, confirm appointment of Vice Mayor to serve a one-year term. Councilmember Hamilton.
I just wanted to very, very quickly take a moment to thank Vice Mayor Medina for his service as Vice Mayor over the past year, and to welcome soon-to-be Vice Mayor Mason into the position for the next year, and to wish her success in that role and our full support as you move into that role. Thank you.
Yeah, and for me on that, when it is, I know it doesn't say, but it is, will be, Councilmember Mason, and that is related within our ordinance. So I know it doesn't say it there, but in the staff report, it makes it very clear. And one of the alternatives was, is we don't want to appoint a Vice Mayor, but that's in our ordinance. And may I suggest, another city did that once and paused on having a Vice Mayor, and I don't know that that's best for operations of government. So with that, that is all that we have on those items that were not for a separate vote. Is there, I just want to make sure that there is no additional comments from the public on any of the items? Seeing none, then I will go and ask for action by council, please. Oh, I'm sorry, all but for M. And then, of course, Mr. Hamilton is recusing himself from N.
To the Chair, I'll make a motion to approve all items on the consent calendar except for Item M.
Second.
There's been a motion and seconded. Salazar, Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
I with recusal on Item N.
Noted. Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. And before we move on to Item M, Mary, then Vice Mayor Medina, thank you for your service and your assistance, because at times you would say, would you like me to go ahead and respond to that email or take that? And we would collaborate on that, and so very much appreciated for that. And then congratulations, Vice Mayor Mason. And this still keeps M's going, so hopefully that won't, it won't get us confused. Now, for the rest of this meeting, if I make a slip here or there, please bear with me. I may have two Vice Mayor at the end of the meeting, so, but wanted to say that. And then move on to Item M, the resolution approving the San Bruno Community Foundation officers for 2022. And that was asked for a separate vote, and for Councilman Marty Medina.
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I need to change my little title there. I don't know if I can do that between the meetings, but
Don't worry.
To not add any more confusion, and I pulled Item M for a separate vote. I'm respectfully abstaining from this item due to the fact that I was not allowed to interview any of the candidates, and didn't feel it was appropriate to be voting. So I am abstaining from this item. Thank you.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to share some comments made by San Bruno Community Foundation Secretary Mr. McLaughlin at the December 1st, 2021 meeting, who raised concerns regarding the election of the treasurer. Specifically, he stated that, "There is something about this that causes me some concerns, but I will say upfront that I intend to vote for it if a motion is made. We are in effect voting for somebody who is not a member of the board yet, and I realized in Leslie's notes and in highlights, a very compelling case on why it should be done and it must be done, but I think a future board needs to look at how we elect our officers and what provisions we have. The last time we had to replace a treasurer before the term was over, the treasurer had left, and we were able to do it as part of the regular process and not part of the annual election," end quote. I do echo Secretary McLaughlin's comments and hope that the board does look into this process. Like Secretary McLaughlin, I remain concerned not only that the treasurer was selected in the way that the position was, but that the memo shared with the foundation members that persuaded the unanimous approval had not been shared with the council or the public. Please do correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager. Between last month's board member appointment process and these comments by respective foundation member, it highlights the need for a transparent process and public access to information on how these decisions are created and made, and preferably not implementing such impactful decisions when there is either no policy or those policies are still in draft versions when utilized for the first time. This concludes my comment for this item, and I, too, will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, any other comments on this item from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, the comments I just heard and the comments we've heard previously under public comment are concerning, and I know we normally don't address comments that are done under public comment, but I definitely think that it erodes confidence in our government when accusations are made and they're not addressed. And I do take exception to the fact that we're doing anything, to any insinuation that we're doing anything that is not in the interest of the community or that anything is done behind closed doors and not within full view of the public. And, you know, the decision on the appointments was not done hastily. Councilmember Hamilton and I spent an enormous amount of time in the process. So, and the process was open. And so I understand and respect the position of my two colleagues here tonight, and I know they felt very strongly about the vote on it. The officers that we're approving tonight were selected per the authority that the board has. I can't dispute former Board Member McLaughlin's comments, as Vice Mayor Mason stated, there was some concern about the way that was done. But I can say that as a member of the subcommittee that worked on selecting the new board members, the selection of a person that could fill that role was first and foremost in our interview process and in our discussions. And so it wasn't something that was done, you know, behind, you know, under the covers. It was done fully intentionally. It was the intention of finding an appropriate person through the entire process, which started earlier this year. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that the public also heard that side of it and understood that those of us that will be supporting this action tonight do it with a full understanding of the process and confidence that what was done was done in the best interest of the city. So thank you for allowing those comments.
Thank you. Anything else from any of my colleagues? Councilmember Hamilton.
I just want to say quickly that, you know, we've already had, you know, long discussions on the process by which the nominations and the appointments took place. And the, I absolutely respect my colleagues' positions in not abstaining from this vote. I, as I stated when we did the election, I would not support the same, going through the same process again. It was, you know, we, it was agreed to by a majority, and we followed the process that we agreed to, but we found as we went through it that it disenfranchised our, you know, our colleagues, so that was unacceptable. So the, but it was off, you know, so I'm not going to go back and rehash that particular vote, but the, I just want to go on record saying that I do, I do respect my colleagues' decision to abstain from this vote. from this vote. And it wouldn't be known to the public because there wasn't any public at our special meeting yesterday, but we did revise the nomination process so that that will never happen again and that the full council will be interviewing all candidates in the future. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, and just for clarity, I also won't go into detail, but for anybody watching, the assurances by fellow council members that the entire council would have the opportunity to interview those applicants was one of the reasons that it got not unanimous, but it got a consensus to move the process forward to select applicants. And so, to later not be given that opportunity by some of those that formed the consensus is disappointing. Thank you.
So, since everybody's had an opportunity at least once or, just summarize, is I did watch that last Community Foundation Board meeting because they also were issuing grants. And Mr. McLaughlin did bring up that topic. However, it was a thought of, you know, was a little different because we still, they have nominated already with the first resolution, three current board members that have already been on the board for the office, for the other three offices. It was just the Treasurer slot and those folks by council action was, were appointed. And from there, when they take office January 1st, then they can select. So, in essence, to my knowledge, it is done appropriately by them being appointed by action of this council. And then, they wanted to select one of those new persons that has the best qualification and background to be the Treasurer. The other thing Mr. McLaughlin also mentioned, referencing back years ago, at a point that Rico came and asked me, do I think the council should be involved? And he'd said, yes. And that's where I had stood back then as well. And he said, but I have come to change my mind. And the way it works is good, as I have. So, appreciate everybody's comments. Three of the board members that have already been serving were for those offices. So, in essence, it's, we're talking, I guess, about one person. So, with that, I appreciate everybody's comments. And I'm going to, again, this is item M on consent, and that's the adoption, adopt the resolution approving the San Bruno Community Foundation officers for 2022. Is there action from council?
To the Chair, I will move that we approve the slate of officers for the San Bruno Community Foundation.
I will second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you and congratulations to the board members that were appointed as well as the officers. I know there's a lot of work ahead. All right. With that, we're going, that has concluded consent. And now, we will move on to item number seven, conduct of business. First item, please.
Item 7A, receive first quarter financial update report for fiscal year 2021-22 as of September 3th, 2021, and adopt the resolution approving the carryover of fiscal year 2020-21 purchase order encumbrances and fiscal year 2021-22 budget amendments.
Okay. Thank you very much, City Clerk. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to the Finance Director.
Mr. Mayor, if we can have a moment, we are working and loading the PowerPoint presentation.
Absolutely. The City Manager, do you need like a five-minute break or are we just pause?
Five would be perfect.
All right. Folks, we're going to go ahead and recess for five minutes and then we'll reconvene. Thank you for your understanding and patience. Okay. It's been five minutes. We can all
Everybody here?
Come back in too. Waiting on the Vice Mayor.
I talk on your label, Marty.
Okay. We'll go ahead and reconvene the City Council meeting and we will turn it over to the Finance Director, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and the members of this city also. Sorry, I'm a little bit confused about the schedule and everything, really. So, today I'm doing a presentation for the Q1, first quarter financial update for the fiscal year 2022. The objective of this presentation is recommend the City Council to receive the first quarter financial update report as of September 30th, 2021, and that ask the Council to adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 operating and capital improvement budget by approving the carryover purchase orders from 2021 and then some budget enhancements for the 2022. And our agenda, including the Q1 fiscal year financial update, and we will update on the general fund, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. We will list the purchase order encumbrance need to be carried forward for the current fiscal year. We also provide a few budget amendment requests to the City Council. First of all, let me review the general fund adopted budget for the fiscal year 2022. I know the budget was adopted back in June, so it's been almost, it's been over six months, I'm sure. The memory needs to be refreshed. So, if you recall, the revenue budget in the general fund, in the adopted budget, was just shy of $50 million. And expenditure was a little bit over $50 million. And we had a deficit of just a little bit over $1 million. Fortunately, we have sufficient amount of our fund balance in general funds. So, we proposed and the council also approved to use the general fund balance to cover the slightly shortfall as we presented in the adopted budget. And here is the look of the general fund expenditure, general fund revenue status as comparative as of September 31st and compared to the same period last year. As you can tell, the general fund revenue are pretty much on par with last year. There are only a few items I need to talk about. The first item I want to talk about is the TOT. Last, as you see, last year as of September 31st, that we only received $180,000, while this year we saw a significant increases to $410,000. We're still behind in TOTs from pre-COVID era, but comparing last year, that's more than 2%, more than 100% increase of the revenue. So, I'm not saying the hospitality industry is back to normal, but I would definitely see a gradual coming back of the hospitality industry. We will continue monitor the TOT revenue and then see if it's reasonable for we as well to adjust the revenue forecast for the year. But I will also remind you, comparing with the last fiscal year, we did increase the revenue in the budget by significant, by almost 80%. Last year, our budget for TOT was about $950,000. So, 1.7 million is significant increase from the last year budget. So, we are cautious, cautiously watching the development of TOT revenue. Our motor vehicle license, we budgeted $3.5 million. Nothing has received it. I just want to let, remind everybody, we only receive VAFs twice a year, once in January, once in June. So, you will see some actual receipts showing up when we do the third quarter update. Regular room tax is pretty much on par as of last year. Business tax, we saw slight, we saw quite a bit of decrease. In the staff report, we illustrated why the business tax was not received as much as prior fiscal year. One reason is we're in negotiation with a major vendor for business tax payment alike agreement. And their tax has been delayed because this negotiation is pending. Additionally, we also saw some businesses reported a lower gross receipts from last year. So, some of the business tax received from, we have received was a bit lower. With, after we finished the negotiation with the major vendor, we will see come increase in the business tax revenue. There's just some delay there. There is not really a whole heck of a lot I want to talk about about revenue. The last thing on the revenue is the departmental revenues. There is about a six, close to $700, $700 in difference in the departmental revenues comparing this September with last September. The reason is we deferred some revenue from the last fiscal year. So, it's showing up as this year's revenue, but it's really not money we received this year. It's money we received last year because we didn't spend the money and departments, us to defer, finance department to defer the revenue so they can put into their current year budget. So, that money is current, is already appropriated by the council. We will spending that revenue we received last year this year. Yeah, $700,000. And here is a look of the general fund expenditures. So, if we look at the percentage wise, general fund expenditures are pretty much on par as of last fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we spent 32% as of September 30th. This year, we did the same. The dollar amount vary a little bit. As we know, the budget has increased a slight little. So, there isn't really much I want really bring up to everybody's attention. So, if you don't have any question, I'll move on. This is a look of the financial status for our enterprise funds. The first thing I want to talk about is the water enterprise and wastewater and have revenues. The water, interestingly, I would say intuitively, we would say water revenue should move in the same direction as the wastewater revenue because the revenue situation is the same. We know it's based on the consumption and we, the rates of water operation and wastewater operation neither increased this year. But if you compare this September versus the last September, you see water revenue dropped by almost $400,000, while wastewater revenue increased by 200, almost $250,000. Why is that? So, there is a timing, a timing differential between water and wastewater operations. Water is priced based on the actual consumption. So, we read meters for the customers based on their actual usage. So, this year, because of, it's the actual dryer year and the governor and the company stayed all called for people to conserve. So, we do see a drop in consumption. So, people did conserve. We see a drop in consumption for the first quarter by almost 9%. So, that's why, you know, with no rate increase, we see water revenue decrease. But why wastewater revenue increase? Wastewater revenue is based on estimated consumption. So, every July, we updated accounts consumption based on the previous winter usage from previous November to April. Now, November 2020 to April 2021. Now, November 2020 to April 2021 is really the effect of the COVID era. Most people are still staying home. So their water consumption during that time was actually pretty high. But we have updated their water wastewater, we dad usage starting to lie. So comparing with the last period for wastewater revenue, we actually see the recorded, you know, estimated consumption for wastewater is higher. So that's why the wastewater revenue is higher than last year. Next thing on the list will be CityNet. CityNet, we see a slightly decrease in revenues, a lot of related with their delinquency. We are working with CityNet and other agencies trying to collect the delinquent amounts. And also, CityNet is persuading their delinquent customer to downgrade their service level so that we can bring all the customers on pace with their usage. Stormwater is really, the stormwater, you see a slight increase in the revenue, but it's really not revenue. Council approved the transfer from up for about $1 million to stormwater. So we are doing the transfer to stormwater gradually. We're not transferring a million dollars just one, in one step. So that's why you see a little bit of revenue. Typically, stormwater revenue does not come until the property tax comes in because we put the stormwater fees on the property tax roll. So in December, actually this month, when the county remitted the property tax to the city, we will see some revenue in stormwater. The next time we see the stormwater tax revenue will be in April of 2022. This one is a list of the finance status for internal service funds. And internal service funds are pretty much on par as the last year. So I do not see too much to talk about, about internal service funds. As you know, the revenues are mostly coming from all the departments because all department contributes to internal service. We require revenue by month, just moves out the revenue stream. And then the expenditures occurred when the POs or the actual expenditure incurred. Highlights on the Q1 actuals, that some of them aren't actually talked about. So general fund revenue received expenditure occurring Q1 are consistent with previous years. Previous years and revenue, water revenue fell while wastewater revenue increased because of the consumption differential. And then CityNet experienced a little bit of a shock and decrease in their revenue mostly because of delinquent customers. For internal service funds, sorry, I forgot to mention. We do see the insurance premium on general liability and workers compensation higher than budgeted. We will reassess the actual billing in the mid-year review and then recommend some amendment there. And carryover, carryover is really for purchase orders, help facility to complete all the projects. Not all projects appropriated in the previous fiscal year can be completed by the fiscal year. So it is critical for us to carry over the purchase orders encumbered in the budget. All in all, staff look at all the purchase order we need to carry over, a little bit over $8 million for the PO and then that's part of the resolution for the Council to adopt today. We don't have a whole lot of budget amendments in Q1. There are a couple of things, and we have good news and some bad news. The good news on the revenue side is we received notice from the county of the San Mateo informing us the vehicle license fee will increase than our budget by more than $1.1 million. In our budget, when we budgeted the VAF, we didn't know how much we will receive. So basically, we based on the last year receipt. So staff only budgeted by $3.2 million in June for the council adoption. But in November, we received a notice from the county. They told us we would get a little bit over $4.3 million in vehicle license fee for this fiscal year. However, even with the additional money, we're still experiencing a shortfall. In the staff report, we explain the shortfall for this fiscal year 2021, '22. For the VAF is estimated to be $1.4 million. So we will be working with the city and county and state to figure out how we will get the additional $1.4 million back from the state. And the other thing is we're going to see a little bit of drop in regulatory tax, not from last year, but from the budget. So when we calculated the adopted budget and then we send the bill to the hardship draw, staffing from, staff from hardship draws raised some questions about our calculation. So we look at some historical calculation, realize that the rates, table rates need to be recalibrated because of the refreshment and disconnection of the CPI rate published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So in the recalibration, we noticed that after the recalibration, the carroom tax will be slightly behind what we put in the budget, will be like $60,000. But fortunately, we're going to receive a little more in the VAF and then the little deflection will be more than covered by VAF addition. Another revenue slight decrease is regarding the fire for paramedic services. So the City San Bruno participated in a county's joint power authority agreement. We don't have control over that agreement, county has the control, full control of the agreement. So based on the information received by county, we're going to see a slightly drop in revenue of about $27,000 there. Next thing on that, below, the next item on this list is we need another $17,000 for the crossing guard contract. So when we budget in, when we budget, when we make the budget development, we put a crossing guard contract estimated about $34,000. But the actual agreement has been finalized and then the agreement needs about $55,000. I believe it's, maybe my number is a little bit, but the difference is $17,555. So we are providing a crossing guard service for the school and it's all we needed. So we ask the Council to give us an additional $17,555 for the crossing guard. The next one on the list is the library. As you all know, library has restored 75% of the operation hours and then is open to the public. We're using more supplies than we put in the budget. And just to give you a context, we put in the budget a meager $3,000 for library supplies. Clearly, it's not enough. So libraries is still very brutal. They are only asking additional $14,000 to cover their supplies, I think it's justified. Also, there is another budgetary item in the IT department. When we do budget for the IT, we needed a budget, we needed a budget for IT manager. But at that time, we only put in the budget as for consultants. That's so, as you, our current IT manager is actually retired, rehire. He's only working here part-time. Now, he, as of January, I think his hours will be masked out. We can allow, we will be limited to, in our utilization of his service. We need to be actively recruiting a full-time IT manager. So with that, we need to increase the budget for that position to a full-time position. So that's another, that's another $124,000. That's including salary and benefits for the remainder of the year. Equipment reserve, police department is requesting some additional money for their vehicle outfitting. They're asking for, they're asking for another $68,000 for the outfitting of the vehicles. Internal service fund is, we need additional $34,000 to repair the flooring of the police department, it has a sewer leak and caused some quite big damage. So with the new budget change, so for general fund, it's actually increasing revenue over $1 million. Internal service fund is only about, sorry, can't see it. Internal service fund, we see expenditure increased by $150,000. We are also asking for equipment reserve expenditure budget to increase by $68,000. If you add all of them together, we're actually in the good. Because where revenue is increased by over $1 million, expenditure increases only about $200,000, $20,000, $30,000 actually. So with that, we are requesting the Council to receive the first quarter financial update report as of just September 30th, 2021. We asked the Council to adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 operating and capital improvement budget by approving the carryover of the fiscal year 2021 purchase order encumbrance and amending the fiscal year 2022 budget limits. Then I'm open for questions, if you have any.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions from colleagues? Councilmember Medina, before you begin, sir, could we stop sharing the screen? Thank you. Please, Mr. Medina.
Got the mute button off. Thank you for that presentation. I have a couple of questions for City Services for the revenue. We can go to slide, what is that, seven? And for the delinquent account balance of approximately $250,000, I just want to make sure I understood the slide, that it, that is money that has not been collected at all. And then the $2 million that is in that column is what has been collected.
Is the CityNet services, they do have the $250,000 in delinquent, that means uncollected revenue? We do not have a memo, so sure, I understand about the $2 million.
Yes, the question I have is that you say year-to-date revenue is two, almost 2.1 million? And that's short of the quarter million?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So if it wasn't delinquent, we'd be ahead of the budget, our last year's numbers, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. So that's relatively the news, that we would be ahead, but we still have a delinquency there. And there are various programs that customers can sign up or to work on keeping their service at a lower level, but also getting on a payment program. Is that correct?
Yes, they are, the CityNet, my understanding, CityNet, the staff have sent out a letter to their delinquent customers, try to help them to set up payment plan. And then also recommend to apply for any state and federal help. And then also, the other way is help, help them to lower their service level, so that we use their bills.
If I can, Vice Mayor Medina, Kevon Roman, City Manager, just expand upon that. Everything the Finance Director said is exactly true. For several months now, the CityNet Department have been working with customers that had delinquent balances, letting them know about the state program that will help with payment of delinquent utility bills, always telecommunications bills are part of that. There have been a number of customers that have taken advantage of that. There have also been a number of downgrades so that the enterprises no longer paying the retransmission fees, but yet people are continued to be provided with a basic level of service. It's also important to know that as the department works with individual customers, some customers are not eligible for those programs because they have not had a COVID-19 physical impact. And so the department is working with them on an individual basis for payment plans. A number have brought their balances current or entered a payment plan. But absolutely, what has been said is true that there is still approximately $250,000 of delinquent accounts that had they been paid, we would be ahead of last year. But the department will continue to work on its delinquent accounts. Which should be noted, became delinquent during COVID-19. Before COVID-19, delinquencies were almost close to zero. And so it's important to know that the current delinquencies relate because of the current COVID-19 period.
Thank you. How large are the delinquent accounts in water and sewer?
The question was, do we have the amount of delinquent accounts in water and sewer at the moment?
I haven't asked the staff to give me an accurate number. I want to, the number of accounts, I do not recall. I do recall, we recently, there was a standard bill, $1.55, if I remember the number correctly. They were, it was providing, the state is providing a billion dollar almost to cover the water systems for delinquency, top the water systems for delinquency payment, for delinquent payment. So the City San Bruno applied for that program. We tallied up the water delinquency, delinquencies occurred from March 2020 to June 2021. And our total tally on the water itself was 400, almost $420,000. And then that program will provide some relief to the City of San Bruno on the water delinquencies. And after January, if that program has money left over, we will be able to apply for wastewater delinquencies. So our wastewater delinquency is probably, I would say, theoretically is on par with wastewater, is on par with water delinquencies. Sewer delinquency is not that severe because the sewer charge is not huge.
Thank you for that. And since we are talking about water and sewer, when we're talking about, I believe this upcoming year, we're going to be doing a rate water study. And just wanted to hear a little bit more that that study will also possibly look into this char, charge that flips from your winter use in July. It's just really hard to see how the water goes down and sewer goes up, right? And if that balance was, if the determination was earlier in the year, it would seem like perhaps it would be a little bit more, not a, not a big differential. I'm still struggling with how that is occurring. But maybe when we do the rate study, they'll look into how that's calculated. Because I know we've asked, the Council's asked, like, when they do the study, how half of the town is calculated on their water usage in the winter is, I believe, a month or different between the different sides of the city.
Vice Mayor Medina, you are correct. There is a water and sewer rate study that will begin this fiscal year. And absolutely, it will not just look at the finances of the enterprise and the capital projects, but will also look at the structure of the rates and how those rates are calculated. The Council did make that request and we are following forward. They made that request and we are following forward.
Thank you very much, and and I'm sorry, this is the last question. For the for the remaining cash on hand, right? How are we looking?
Is that question related to the water and sewer enterprises or?
No, no, for for the city in general with with, we do get those updates bi-monthly, but for this snapshot right now at this quarter, with the additional million dollars, right, how are we looking? Or eight hundred thousand, are we looking overall?
So in general, when you talk cash on hand, we operate in a pooled cash basis, and so the overall summary of this Q1 update is we are expenditures are tracking close to budget and due to the additional motor vehicle license revenue, overall general fund revenues are are net approximately eight hundred thousand. And so we are tracking slightly above budget for revenue, right off like with expenditures. Major news outside of that from Q1. With respect to overall fiscal fund balance portrait, we will talk about that at the mid-year update, which is scheduled to come to council in February. And so and we will have a larger portrait on overall fund balances.
Thank you very much.
Are there questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
I just wanted to say, for the most part, I agree with all of the requests that are being made in this adjustment, there doesn't seem to be anything in here that's not essential. So I am in support of of these changes. The the one thing that caught my eye right away was one of the earlier slides where we show our initial approved budget was taking a million dollars out of fund balance. And, you know, I am concerned that in the past few years, we have eroded our emergency funds, so our, I'm drawing a blank now. But essentially, we've drawn down some of our some of our emergency funds and we've been pulling from fund balance pretty consistently to balance the budget. And so I'd like there to be some focus going forward where we do have one-time revenues appearing that we, some emphasis on restoring those funds and building those back up while we have them, because we just never know when next emergency is around the corner. So those are my only comments, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Vice Mayor Mason, sorry.
Thank you. Just a question, should JCPenney at some point get sold and closed? What's the revenue that JCPenney brings in? I'm just just out of curiosity, I don't know how that would impact the budget.
Sure, I'll take I'll take that, like that says Vice Mayor Mason now.
Whoever magically changed that, I don't know.
Vice Mayor Mason, yes, so your question was, if JCPenney's closes, will that have an impact on the budget? I think there are actually two components to that question. The first one, I think that most people may think of when they hear that question is JCPenney store closing. And so we do not have any knowledge on JCPenney's store closing. What we do know is that the JCPenney's property in San Bruno was put up for sale and that sale did close. However, what we know is when that sale was advertised, a part of the agreement was that if there was a buyer, that the that the store would stay open for approximately three more years. And so we are working with the new buyer, but we do not have any information on imminent closing of JCPenney's and we actually are in conversations with the new buyer and their intentions for the property in the immediate time. This is certainly continue with the debt there, as long as JCPenney wants to be a tenant as they think about larger options for the property. And so as far as the sales tax that the city receives in the coming year and likely the next few years, no major change because of the property sale. With regard to the property sale, certainly every time property sells, the the sale value may increase, the assessed value on the books, we certainly know that that will be the case. And so we are analyzing all of those figures and are not ready at this point to say exactly how much increase in property tax that may provide, but we can certainly provide that information to the council at a later date.
Great, thank you.
And and for me, I won't repeat what Councilmember Salazar said, but I have that same as well as the Equipment Reserve Fund. At the times to also balance, we are not replenishing that, and obviously that will catch up. So I think we need to be mindful of those of the accounts that Mr. Salazar brought up and one that I'm adding. Are there any other questions or comments? At this time, are there any members of the public that would like to seek on this item? If you would, if you could please raise your hand and the City Clerk will bring you in. And then to my colleagues, are there any other final comments, questions? Seeing nobody from the public, this is a action and it is not a resolution, is there any action by council? Oh, Councilmember Hamilton.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce a resolution amending fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two operating and capital improvement budget by approving the carryover fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one purchase order encumbrances and fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendments.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, we'll go Hamilton, Salazar, Mr. Medina said it was okay, and thank you for reading all that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that concludes conduct of business. Now we're going to move on to comments from council members. The first one, item A, under Vice Mayor Mason, and we'll take one at a time if we could, and then we'll go to the next. Number one, request the presentation of the San Bruno Community Foundation on the result of their twenty twenty-one community listening campaign two point oh. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. So I just wanted to ask if staff could request of the community foundation a presentation. This was a, you know, listening survey that was conducted largely during COVID, and I think the foundation did make good efforts to try to get groups of people together for kind of little sub-meetings. And I believe that all the council was interviewed by the consultants as well, and it would be nice to have a public presentation. I have read the report myself, but I think that for the purposes of being ensuring that, you know, there's transparency and that the public knows what was prioritized within the the community listening campaign, would be great to have a formal presentation. So that would be a request to direct staff to make that request of the foundation.
Any other questions or comments from council? I did want to say on the listening campaign two point oh, that was several months ago. So that is kind of done, and I think it's available for folks to read the report online and all of that. What really is at the next phase is the strategic initiatives, and that's what was presented at this month's San Bruno Community Foundation, is from the listening campaign has transitioned to out of that the strategic initiatives and on what initiatives they are looking to formulate. Personally, just hearing it, it's like, we're beyond the listening two point oh. That's that was last year, or earlier this year, I apologize. And really now we're at this latter stage. If I'm not mistaken, I think the staff report for the listening campaign, not staff report, but their their report is online, and I know the strategic initiatives, they just had the meeting and there was a whole presentation that was made that I'm sure can be viewed or is available too.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you want a response, but that that is correct. The difference is a strategic listening campaign is came directly from the public. So, for example, I think the number one request that was strongly recommended was downtown, we all have a street scape plan downtown, and how does that tie into the strategic initiatives? And I think oftentimes the public has questioned, you know, how is the money spent, but more importantly, how is determined how the money is spent? And so the listening campaigns are really, I think, just as important, if not more important, because it does come directly from the community. And it would be wonderful if if the presentation tied in the strategic initiatives, of course, but I do think of the listening campaign, I actually thought we'd get a presentation sooner, I don't know how it was done with the first round of the strategic listening campaign, I, because I wasn't involved other than being a resident attending the meetings. But I do think the council member now, it would be wonderful to have a public presentation at this meeting. I think a lot of the public doesn't know about the community foundation meetings and their meetings aren't posted, so it's a little, it is a little bit different to try to get the information outside of going to the website and reading it yourself.
Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Councilmember Hamilton.
I'm supportive of this, especially given that it's a presentation that's already prepared and it would just be a, it would just be inviting inviting members of the foundation to come and, you know, during announcements and presentations and presenting, and I think that would be good to have that have that content be available to the to the viewers of of our meeting, which which gets probably a different and perhaps broader audience. So I'm supportive of this.
Councilmember Medina.
Yeah, I see no harm in in asking and and receiving a presentation. I have, I didn't myself look at it, I will go back and look at it, but, you know, we have a lot of busy schedules and it'd be beneficial to know what's happening. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, again, I don't, no harm in anything when it comes to something like this, but again, I just want, when folks say, well, nothing's ever been said or said, I, there is, and it has, and Washington last meeting, so I do know there's opportunities, so it's not, you know, somewhere where nobody can find it or see it, but, okay.
Now for one comment, Mr. Mayor, on this, and I know that it looks.
Absolutely, Mr. Salazar.
My my request on this would be that if we extend an opportunity for the foundation to make that presentation, that it be a request that if they feel that they want to do it, that they should be given a forum at a future council meeting to do so, but not to in any way imply that the council is asking them to do that or telling them that they need to come and present this, because I believe that's overstepping what our role is. And since our role in their operations is defined, I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's presented as a as a request for them to have the opportunity, not not in any way being commanded to, you know, come before the council. So that would be my only addition.
And and it does, it does say request, presentation, so the word request is there, and I did see nods from almost all of us, I'm sorry, all of us, in that distinction. Okay? All right, good, so we'll move on to number two. Invite the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce to share with the council their current organizational structure, membership structure, and membership drive efforts for twenty twenty-two calendar of events. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so this is really just an opportunity for the merchants, for the Chamber of Commerce to let us know what they're working on. I think we have a lot of very active merchants downtown, but it's not through the chamber, and so I I think it would just be nice to hear from them. I know the chamber just lost their their new president, so maybe there's a vice president. I'm really not familiar with them or their meetings or much. I mentioned this before, that I know in another city, there are two council members attend every meeting. Here we have a staff member that attends the meetings, but I'd just love to hear about what they're doing, we've got so much going on in San Bruno, and if they be willing to, I definitely love to hear from them, I can't speak for the other council members. So it's similar to the previous request, it's a request, but because we have to give direction to the city manager with three or more votes and request it publicly, I'm making that request now.
I would ask for us to be mindful that, like you just said, the executive person is departing at the end of this month, and with the holidays, I think we need to be mindful, if we were transitioning from executive personnel, it's like, and somebody says, well, we want somebody to come and speak to us. Maybe, you know, they need to probably regroup, recruit and come up with some plans and see where they're at too. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, and we do have a, someone from the senior leadership team who is actually on the board of directors, if my memory is correct, because I think we swore them in at the City Hall steps. And so, you know, maybe we should allow our staff person through the city manager to also give us maybe an email and just kind of say, where are they at with this transition element, or are they meeting, you know, things like that, so that we have some basics, because we already have somebody that's on staff that that does attend. Other thoughts or comments from council? Councilmember Hamilton.
I, as with the other one, I don't see, I don't see any harm in this, and, you know, obviously, yes, the the president departed, but that, hopefully, the president wasn't the entirety of the Chamber of Commerce, so there should be other, you know, there's a full board, there's other, there's other membership there, and, you know, we can extend the invitation, and if they, if they respond back that they, you know, hey, can we wait until April or whatever, that's, that's fine, but, you know, whatever, but I don't see, I don't see any harm in inviting them to come and and give us this information. We, Councilmember Medina and I engaged with the new president as part of our work on the Downtown Improvement Committee, and obviously didn't go too far because she resigned right afterwards, probably no relation. And so it would be really, it would be really helpful, you know, if, you know, what's going on there, and to also give the the chamber an opportunity to talk to us to see what, if anything, we as a council can do to support their efforts, which is, which was exactly why Councilmember Lydian and I reached out to the president in the first place. So I'm supportive of this, thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Yeah, yes, thanks for bringing this up, Vice Mayor Mason. Because it, the Downtown Improvement Committee, like, how are we going to work with the chamber? And and we haven't yet emailed the board because we know they're in transition, so at some point, when they're ready to come to our council and give them a presentation and just kind of what they think to public, I think that would be favorable. And Councilmember Hamilton and I haven't figured out yet, you know, what do we want to do that now that there's a vacancy, because the merchants are really doing a lot of things on their own right now. They 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 had a holiday pop-up, they have a food drive going on, they have a toy drive going on, and they're going to have Santa Claus downtown on Friday, so, or is it Saturday? So, thank you. So, you know, trying to be supportive and figuring out what the next steps are and whatever the council can do to assist them. So I'm in support of this.
Any other comments? You know, and and keep in mind, like we already said, we we do have meetings, I like to see presentations stay, you know, not ten minutes, honestly, so I don't know if, depending on the length or what is thought of, you know, maybe it needs to be, oh, I got that part, maybe it needs to be a separate, special meeting, who knows? But it just depends how long, because as we know, sometimes presentations, if not, you know, structured, do that. And and I always want to tell my colleagues, you know, there was a time many, many, many moons ago, way before me being here, and they were invited and they came up with an idea. They needed money from the city. So, you know, understand when you say, well, what do you need from us? I think things need to be articulated and quantified. So anyway, just a little historical perspective, okay, I think we have guidance on that, and, oh, City Manager. And, oh, city manager.
Mayor Medina, just want to request clarification on the request. Are we requesting that the Chamber of Commerce provide a presentation to the city council at their convenience, by a certain time? I just want to make sure what the request is, so we can convey it appropriately.
Thank you for asking for that while you have us here. I'm just going to go mine, and mine is at their convenience. They're volunteers, too. I mean, so I have a thumbs up, I have a nod, I have, I think consent, I think I have everyone saying yes.
I would call it an open invitation to come to the council for a presentation, not a request, but open invitation. It's friendly.
Yeah, to answer, and to be clear, I've seen everybody in concurrence at their convenience.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, direct to the manager to schedule interviews for existing applicants of the Culture and Arts Commission and bring back to the city council for appointment by the first meeting in January.
Took me, took me a second to know you were talking about me. So I just, we've had this open seat since July, and I'm worried that we're losing applicants who may have been interested in the role. And so it's one position, and I'm just wondering if we could maybe speed up filling that position. I wanted just to highlight that Half Moon Age has approved its first public art policy to guide how the city will manage funding, submission, evaluation, and removal of public art, as the city looks at maintaining and removing several art pieces. As we see our first mural downtown, it definitely livens up downtown, and I think it's important that we start looking at how to maybe future projects go through any process so that they align with our streetscape plan, so that things aren't just kind of popping up all over, all over the place. And so it would be great to have a complete arts and culture commission that can maybe start having the conversation before we get to strategic initiatives, because I know that this would probably take staff time to start a project like this. But right now, the request is, is not that, but the request really is to ensure that we have a full arts and culture commission, since the seat's been empty for six months.
Okay, so the word is a request, and I like that phraseology. And city manager?
Sure. I would like to ask the city clerk to provide an update on that recruitment process. I know that a recruitment process was launched.
Yes, this is Melissa Thurman, city clerk. A recruitment effort was launched. We are in the process of accepting applications. We had six applications on file from previous applicants. However, four have withdrawn when asked if they would like to proceed, and two never responded to requests from email or phone calls. So we currently have zero applications on file. We have not received any new applications from members of the public.
Also?
I'm sorry, go on, Mayor.
No, 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 please, I apologize.
No, the notice is posted on the city's website. It is posted at the city clerk's office at City Hall. We have posted on Nextdoor, and we are going to do another push in early January. I plan to do another push, because it's after the holidays. As we get closer to the holidays, people are less inclined to apply. So I think it's best if we can get their attention right after the holiday season in hopes that we can get new applicants for this vacancy. We also have one vacancy on the Traffic Safety Parking Committee that came tonight, former member Scott Thomas's seat, and so we are accepting applications for both vacancies.
Yeah, you, thank you for continuing, because that's what I was also going to say, is maybe we have a TSBC as well as, as this, but normal practice, but the first meeting in January is the 11th. And I don't know realistically how, how that gets done by the 11th to interview and et cetera. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I'd like to request, city clerk, if you could, if you could share the notices with us, with us via email, then we, as council members, can amplify them through our own social media channels as well as part of, as part of the push.
Yes, go ahead.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So thank you for the update. So what it sounds is that there are no current applicants on file, so we do need to go out. And at the same time, I would, I think we're all concurrent. We've already talked about a process when vacancies occur last night, and so there's some guidance in the proposed draft of policies and procedures. So I would just assume that we're in concurrence to have the process and recruitment begin for both positions as, as normally outlined with the council member Hamilton, which is, if we could also have a, maybe we can use whatever method, methods we have to help increase the message out there to the community. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm sorry.
I know, you're fine. And I just want to, if I can just say, I saw Director Matola's face, if you can say that with a mask. So Director Matola, I just don't want to worry you. I'm not asking for a whole public art process to take place right now. I just, I just mentioned it to put this in context, because at some point, I know that we'll be working on it, and I know you have a lot on your plate with Iraq, but I did just want to say, yeah, I see the two thumbs up, I don't want to scare you. But at some point, I'd love to see our Arts and Culture Committee involved when that process is ready to begin. So just wanted to give you some assurances on that. And I just have one more comment, and that's just that, oh, okay, the Santa Downtown, I was going to mention it, so I'm glad someone mentioned it. It's December 17th, and it's at the Christmas Tree in Centennial Plaza, which, by the way, looks lovely to all the staff who worked on it. Thank you so much. And it'll be from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And the event's being sponsored by Twice as Nice as Couple Josh and Sedana, and grand leader Mike Carza, who are downtown merchants, merchants who have just continuously given back to San Bernardino. So thank you so much, and hopefully you can go out and take a picture with Santa on Friday. Happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now we're going to move on to item B, under Marty Medina. Number one, request to obtain an on-call concrete repair contract. Councilmember Medina?
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've been thinking about this for quite a while, and the whole purpose of the item is to, to create discussion on sidewalk repair, and whether that's an on-call concrete repair contract, or some other staffing option in, in providing additional resources to staff to improve the timeliness of improving pedestrian safety and improving those areas in specific high-traffic areas, near schools, near parks, also in our downtown. And as I was thinking about this, and I, I mentioned to the city manager, I didn't get to this point in it, but what is the feasibility of conducting more of our own concrete work, concrete repair work, if Measure G funds were being used to supplement staff? And at some point, I understand, when we get closer to budget, that we'll have the more appropriate time to talk about it, but it is something that I, I would like staff to do, provide some analysis and some, how, how cost-effective is it to always subcontract the concrete work when we could potentially bring on some staff, Measure G funding, and do the work ourselves? And that cost analysis is, when you do the work yourself, you don't need an engineer to oversee the project, you don't need an inspector to inspect the work. This work will be done by our in-house staff, who are going to do it right, that are going to find the time to respond quicker to these hazards that are out there. So that's, that's what I was thinking, and, and I think we should talk about it at some point, not next week, not a month or so from now, but at, before, as we're getting into budget, to have that discussion and let staff mull that over a little bit.
Okay, so, thank you. I'm, I'm going to summarize real quick. What I'm hearing you say is, when this comes up in the budgetary process, maybe to look at it, you're kind of, I guess, giving staff just kind of heads up or in advance, like maybe ponder, give it some thought, but in essence, you're not looking for any council concurrence at this time? Am I just want to make sure and then?
Yeah, yeah. So if I can explain my interpretation of the council comment, right? So we bring an issue to the city manager, we talk about something, and it's like, hey, I think we could do something like this. And it's like, ah, well, if you don't get, I guess, a yes, it's like, your option is to bring it to council. And I wanted to bring that to council and, but not have it, make it clear that it's going to happen right now. It's just something that I think is worthwhile, that's going to take more than 10 minutes, right? Because we're following, we're attempting to follow the 10-minute rule when we were in our one-on-one discussions. So anything substantial would, would need to be either approved by the city manager in your one-on-one, or would require direction. And these are, these are the policies that we're to agendize topics, so that's why it's being brought forward this way.
Okay, I appreciate the clarity. And you were right on the 10-minute rule, and the 10-minute rule is not just the one-on-one with the city manager, but any of us giving questions and comments or reports and asking, and if it's over 10 minutes, then yeah, you are correct. We're not
Right, this will take more than 10 minutes. You're right.
To be mindful of staff and, and the resources and, and I don't mean bandwidth in a negative way, but just only so many hours. City, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Vice Mayor, or former Vice Mayor. Hey, I think this is an easy one. irrespective of the 10-minute rule or not, sidewalk repair, sidewalk safety, on-call concrete repair is absolutely important. For our, our new public works director, Matt Lee, is on day 20 of our new public, of being the city's public works director, and we've already had conversations around this, and I think it's a very worthwhile conversation that he and I will continue and that we can certainly bring back to the city council to look into how we do concrete repair and look at any changes to that. I think there are a number of conversations that need to be had around what we do now and the various options and how it was done in the past. But absolutely, are there ways where we can enhance our sidewalk repair program? Yes, and so we're committed to having those conversations. And at this point, I, I can't say the meeting, but I can certainly say over the next, either the first quarter or early, either the third quarter, which is January, February, March, or the beginning of the next quarter, which
That's good enough.
When we meet in the budget time, we can certainly have that conversation. So 110% agree.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, also any other items under council comments that you might have in just gentlemen?
Yeah, yeah. These will be short, much shorter, Mr. Mayor. So food distributions in San Bruno, you know, it is the holidays. There are two more, this, two more locations this month. I got to look this up here. December 15th and the 22nd at Skyline College from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They could also use some volunteers there. It's kind of hard to get volunteers during the holidays. And one more at Bel Air on the 22nd. And I also wanted to take some time to also recognize that the San Bruno Lions went to Second Harvest, picked up, rented a truck, picked up approximately 200 boxes of food to distribute to all of our public schools here in San Bruno. We got a list from, from the principals on those families that could use some assistance, and we were able to do that. So just wanted to, you know, stress the importance of what it's going to take in order to provide food for people that are hungry, and, and what we can do, hopefully, to do more to end hunger in San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I want to, and this was mentioned briefly earlier. I want to thank Karen Cunningham for organizing, and Stacy Warren and Pino's palette for hosting a wonderful pop-up event for local artists to, to share and sell their, their creations. The other week, it was, it was bustling with activity, and we picked up all kinds of wonderful, wonderful things. I have a piece of artwork that's right behind my, that's right behind my monitor that I'm enjoying as we're doing, as we're doing these meetings. And it was just really a wonderful event and another, just another example of our community coming together and, and in support of our, both of our downtown and of our community. I want to encourage anyone who ends up hearing this to, please, please go and check out what's happening downtown. There's all kinds of wonderful things happening, as was mentioned, with the, the, the holiday tree, the, with the businesses of payment, their windows, it looked wonderful. And there's just a lot of, there's a lot of activity down there, and we just, you know, we always encourage folks to shop local. So if you've got your, if you haven't filled your, your holiday list, please head downtown, you'll find all kinds of gems. And I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, my, my comments were very brief. I also wanted to just offer everyone a happy holiday, and thanks staff for all of their hard work consistently. During the meetings, I always peek over to see who's on the attendees list, and we always have a dedicated group of our senior staff members that are there standing by in case they're needed, and they don't always get called, but just want to acknowledge them. We know you're there, and we appreciate you spending your, every other Tuesday with us. And I just want to wish you all a very happy holiday. And all my colleagues, thank you for always, you know, the spirited conversations and always bringing your best in meetings. Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, mine are not short, and I apologize in advance. No, not too bad. First of all, city manager alluded to Mr. Lee, who joins us as a public works director, so welcome, and nice to see you here. And before you know it, you'll be at the podium, and, and we look forward to that opportunity. And also, I wanted to let my colleagues know that I've been talking to Caltrans quite a bit, and what I have requested is a, under, they're doing a Clean California Bliss Cleaning. It's a new program within the state, and I've asked for us to be considered in regards to around the 280, 380 entrances and exits. And so they are getting weekly calls, but I just wanted to know that. In addition to, I've requested at Samtrans, we have three high locations, they have a lot of extra trash, to be honest, that come from businesses. And I put a request into Samtrans for three locations within the community to, if there are larger garbage cans or bins, to have those done, so that hopefully in between the cleanings that are done, that it retains all of the trash. Also, I wanted to announce this, that I, as one of the mayors in the county, are, have joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative. It's a countywide effort to raise awareness and drive change that will help our residents truly recover from the mental health effects of this pandemic. The initiative seeks to raise awareness regarding resources available to address mental health needs, as well as increase access to mental health resources and therapy options in our community. I am proud to join I am proud to join 11 other incoming mayors in this initiative and look forward to taking significant steps in the coming year to address mental health needs in our community. Just some facts of points. The COVID-19 pandemic redoubled the needs to focus on the mental health needs of our communities. On October 19, 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association declared a national emergency in children's mental health. Declaration notes that while child mental health concerns were steadily increasing prior to the pandemic, pandemic has intensified this crisis across the country. We have witnessed dramatic increases in emergency department visits for all mental health emergencies, including suspected suicide attempts. The CDC reported in April that during the August 2020 to February 2021, the percentage of adults with recent symptoms of anxiety or a depression disorder increased from 36.4% to 41.5%. And the percentage of those reporting in unmet health need cares increased from 9.2% to 11.7%. Increase were largest amongst the adults of ages 18 to 29. And just a little couple of local items that were noted this summer. For the Daily City Youth Center, more than doubled their therapeutic staff, and within 30 days, their caseloads were full. As of May 2021, One Life Counseling Center in San Carlos saw a 386% increase for mental health services over the last year. So this is something that incoming mayors, some of our mayors, we met last month on a Zoom meeting. And this is an effort that we will continue on in 2022, is important. And it's also important with the stigma not to be there, but for people to be able to feel at ease and avail themselves to what is irritable and needed for any of us. And then finally, as was already said, I want to wish the staff and their families a happy holidays. My best wishes for the end of this year and the beginning of next year. I want to thank my colleagues and wish their families a very happy and blessed holiday season. And us starting off together as our team in 2022. And I also want to, of course, always wish my very best to the city of San Bruno, the city with the heart, over this holiday season, and wish nothing but the best of health, happiness, and joy over sometimes challenging times, but that we all will find our ability to do what's best, to do what's right, help one another where we can, and to make a difference along the way. With that, this meeting will adjourn, and we'll, the next regular city council meeting will be held on January 11, 2021, at 7:00 PM. To all a good night.
That's January 11, 2022.
Thank you, I don't know what I was reading, January 11, 2022. Yes, I see, I was reading what was written.
Yeah.
Good time, folks, we're moving forward. And so again.